Good evening. I'd like to call the January 7th, 2025 meeting of the North Bend City Council to order. Welcome, everybody. Will this clerk please call rule?
Mayor Pro Tem Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Brendan Elwood. Councilmember Alan Gotthel.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Cullen. Councilmember Christina Rustic. Councilmember Susan Torgerson.
Here. Heather's here, too.
And Councilmember Errol Tremolata.
Here.
All are present with the exception of Councilmember Rustic, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Can the clerk please lead us in the flag salute? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to you, the new year, and to all of you in front of us, of course, and in chambers and online. Okay, consent agenda. We will now move on to consent agenda.
No move.
You jumped. Wow, okay. You just jumped online there. Okay, so motion made by Mr. Gotthel and seconded by Mr. Brendan Elwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and is unanimous. Before we move on to citizen comments, as indicated on tonight's agenda, if you're attending remotely and wish to submit public comment, please submit your written comments to sopadall@northbendwa.gov. That'll be via in-person drop-off, fax, mail, or email by 5:00 PM of the day of the meeting. You're no longer taking public comments for those attending remotely via Zoom unless they have reached out to our city clerk in advance of the meeting and requested accommodation. Okay, we will now move on to citizen comments. At this time, if you would like to make a comment on an item that is not on our agenda, tonight, we would invite you to come forward to the podium. If you requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak during citizen comments, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we will take your comments after in-person comments. And I should have a very eager.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I like being up here. Sam White, 1299 Southeast 18th Street. I'm actually here as a member of the Planning Commission. The Chair of Planning Commission, Hannah Thiel, had a great idea for this year, wanted us to be a little bit more proactive. And so we are going to start having representatives attend city council meetings and hopefully committee sessions and work studies, as well as potentially some of the other, you know, commissions, like park commission, to hopefully promote more engagement and crosstalk. And we just thought it'd be a good idea and have more FaceTime with everybody and hopefully start getting more cooperative work together as opposed to these discreet groups that just work and avoid, just pass information back and forth, and that's it. So you'll be seeing more Planning Commission at future city council meetings. Thanks.
Not at this time.
Hello, good evening. My name's Amy McGee. I am a mentor with Snoqualmie. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I love that you're confident and want to talk to everybody. So that's going to be coming in about a few, like two minutes, maybe. Okay, I'll read the proclamation and thank you so much for being here. Whereas January 2025 will mark the 23rd anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors and help ensure positive outcomes for our young people. And whereas the city of North Bend honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. And whereas mentoring programs like Youth Success Mentoring, a program by Empower Youth Network, makes our communities and our state stronger by driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. And whereas post-COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring that mentorship relationships continue. And whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with skills needed to support the professional growth for young people and drives positive outcomes for young people and businesses. And whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, I'm sorry, emotional well-being and growth of a young person and the relationships with other adults. And whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships, oops, I'm sorry, pardon me. Whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who do not have a mentor. And whereas youth who meet regularly with their mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs and 27% less likely to start drinking. And whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in the city of North Bend. Whereas National Mentoring, whereas therefore I, Mary Miller, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2025 as National Mentoring Month in the city of North Bend and encourage those interested in becoming a youth mentor to contact Empower Youth Network and thank current youth mentors for devoting their time and effort to ensure the success of our youth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I'm Kathy Highland. I am the Program Coordinator for Empower Youth Network for the Youth Success Mentoring Program. I coordinate specifically for all the Snoqualmie Valley schools. And we have one of our wonderful mentors, Amy McGee, who is here to accept this voice.
Well, thank you, and good evening. My name is Amy McGee, and I'm a mentor at Snoqualmie Elementary School with Empower Youth Network's Success Mentoring Program. Thank you for proclaiming this month National Mentoring Month in Snoqualmie Valley. We appreciate your continued support and funding. We've grown since 2017 to serve all the schools in Snoqualmie Valley and Riverview School districts. We're taking this opportunity to actively recruit volunteers for awaiting youth. Our volunteers mentor 158 students each week. It takes one hour a week to impact a local youth. You have support and training from Empower Youth, and we have students currently waiting. You can find out more at empoweryouthnetwork.org, and we appreciate your help. Thank you so much.
And I just want to add that each mentor only mentors one student. We have 158 across the valley, but if you volunteer, you only have to mentor one student.
Yes.
So we do have some that mentor three or four, though. So thank you.
If you ladies don't mind standing for just a moment, we'll get a photo off.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to item number six, Presentation, Parks Commission Report and 2025 Work Plan. At this time, I would like to invite Parks Commissioner Kyle Braun. Come forward. And there you are, Kyle. And if you'd like to get started, we're all ears.
All right. Good evening, council members and staff. I'm happy to be joined this evening with one of our other Parks Commissioners, Brian Duncan, here. I'm happy to be here tonight to report on our activities from the last year, proposed work plan for the current year, and any feedback or direction you may have for us. Full report is in the Agenda packet, and I will share some highlights here. For expenditures, we spent approximately $6,700 in small park improvement budgets, supported enhancements throughout the city, including two new sets of bike racks along downtown North Bend Way, two new dogway suspencers throughout our park system, new directional blade signs at eight different park locations, four new public parking signs behind Phoenix Plaza by the pump track, and professional photographs by local artists for the downtown trash and recycling containers. Over the course of the year, we reviewed and provided recommendation on a variety of project plans, including potential use of the ARPA funds for park-related projects around the city, subject to project eligibility under funding guidelines, urban forestry policies prepared by staff for incorporation into the energy and sustainability element of the city's comprehensive plan. We read conceptual alternatives for the Ballarat Avenue Terminus Project and conceptual plans for the middle floor shoreline overlook. Following funding of the downtown trash and recycling containers through decision cards submitted in 2023, the Commission solicited and worked with Downtown Foundation on a selection of photographs suitable for large prints format from a location of artists to use on the containers. These containers will be installed next year. Do we have a PowerPoint slide? I think there's a PowerPoint. You can see a couple examples of them. We also discussed planning needs for the, for a future dog park with, within the new Dogren Family Park as a recommended, recommended location, given the park's proximity to multifamily housing developments. We recommended observation of the site over a full winter season to determine the feasibility for this type of use under the potential wet site conditions. We were thrilled to join staff, council, and partner agencies for two ribbon-cutting grand opening ceremonies, one at Tennant Trailhead Park and the other at the Dogren Family Park. Both sites are incredible recreational assets for both residents and visitors to enjoy. We also did our annual parks tour on bicycles focused on trail and bicycle connections in the city, as well as visiting future project sites. These tours have been helpful in informing the Commission and a fun way to experience a local park system. This la- last tour resulted in a recommendation for directional signage to better orient drivers and park users to access points to our local parks. This project is complete with signage installation by Public Works. Over the summer, we hosted Parks Booth twice at the farmer's market at Sideview, engaging the community and gathering input for park and trail-related improvements, including the shoreline public access plan, where we solicited survey and then also the ADA transition plan. Our public, other public engagement events included an open house for feedback for, from the public for the city shoreline access plan development and a community Arbor Day event, together with Mayor Miller, council, and staff. This event took place at Ribery Creek at the South Forks Snoqualmie River to plant native trees and shrubs in conjunction with Habitat Restoration Project coordinated by Mountains of Sound. For this year, proposed work plan includes continued participation in the shoreline access planning project. The William H., or William Henry Taylor Park and Ballarat Avenue Plaza projects by providing review and input on those, those plans. And we look forward to the opportunity to work together with the Economic Development Commission to develop a bicycle improvements plan for the city. We also look forward to coordination with Public Works on park and trail-related improvements that are slated for implementation in 2627 and will improve trail connectivity, recreational options, and pedestrian safety. We plan to continue community engagement by hosting Parks Booth at one of, one or more summer events, such as a block party or the farmer's market, and coordinate an Arbor Day celebration again in the fall. As a Commission, we greatly appreciate the city staff, especially Mike McCarty's leadership that makes our work possible. On behalf of the Commission, I'd like to extend our appreciation to the Council for your support and feedback as we work together to enhance park and recreational resources in the city of North Bend. Thank you. Questions, comments?
Any questions from Council, Kyle? Don't hesitate. Okay, great.
That's a fantastic list, and thank you so much and the Commission for all that you do. You can definitely see the impression and the impact that you're having in the community, so totally welcome it. And it is excited to see all of this wonderful stuff and hoping 2025 will continue on this great momentum that you all have built. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Anybody else from Council?
I've noticed your signs. They're making a huge impact. I never noticed them before, and they're very, they're really good. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Anybody else from Council wish to comment? Mr. Pro Tem?
I'm out of order here, but just jump back to the prior presentation and on behalf of Council, thank those involved in the mentoring program and bringing us Mentoring Month and for your commitment to the youth. That was just a missed opportunity on our behalf, so thank you. And then I want to look forward to Mr. Braun and the Planning Commission without whose insight and eyes on the community, we would not be as good at helping guide the city as I hope that we are. So thank you, and thank you, Brian, for coming along.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, anybody else?
Hi, so I just want to thank the entire Commission, and I've seen so many great things that you guys do. It's our town. I mean, you are integral part of our town, all of you, and everything that you guys do, and I really appreciate it. So I just wanted to say that publicly.
Anybody else I might have missed?
Yeah, congratulations on the park ribbon cuttings. They've been great. My family and friends in my neighborhood have been using it, especially the Dogren one on the east side. We love park access on the east side, and we will, I know Mark Regus isn't here, but we will finish up the sidewalk along North Bend Way, so we have full transparent walkway to the park. But I can tell from the amount of time my family's there, it's getting a ton of use. And I love the idea of potentially the dog park there. I know my neighbors will love it, and I think my, my neighbor here will love it. To find some extra utility to that park is great. So congratulations. It's been fantastic, and keep up the good work.
Yes.
We're still working on Chris Garcia's hockey ball.
Anybody else I might have missed? Hold on. No, no. Well, I just want to extend my heartfelt congratulations once again. Kyle, thanks for being here tonight and all your efforts. And everybody with the Parks Commission for all that you do, day in and day out, year after year after year. It keeps getting better and better. And I've been here quite a while, so I can say that with great meaning. Anyway, thank you so much again.
Yeah, thank you.
A wonderful 2025.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to move on at this time. Oh, thank you. Let there be light or more light. Yeah. You wield that very well. Item number seven, Introductions. Tonight, I'm happy to say that Police Chief Lynch is here to introduce our new North Bend Police Officer and Chaplain. Chief Lynch, will you please come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before I start, I will like to say Happy New Year to all of you, and it was a good holiday for me and my family. I'm hoping you guys had one, too. Standing up here next to me is 35 years and two days of law enforcement experience. I'll start with the two days. Last Friday, recruit Wyatt Shonour graduated from the academy and became Officer Wyatt Shonour. And we had him start his field training on Monday. Today's day number two. We quickly found out that we had overlooked something in hiring him. He doesn't fit into the Ford Explorers. So when you see Officer Shonour riding around North Bend, he will most likely be in the pickup truck. A little bit more room. Wyatt comes to us originally from Reading, Pennsylvania. I got to meet his family last Friday at the graduation. They came from Pennsylvania. Great family. He went to Shenandoah University in Winchester, Virginia, where he graduated, and then he moved his way out west to Montana, working as a U.S. Forest Service Wildland Firefighter. He started to work with the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife shortly after and moved to Leavenworth, Washington. And he heard the calling in his heart to become a police officer, so he started testing. And we are lucky enough to be the ones to say yes and to have him here. He, don't let the size fool you. He's a teddy bear, and he's a great guy. So we're really looking forward to see the growth in him over the next few months during his training. The 35 years, my friend Pat Hammond, I met Pat at my church in Snoqualmie, and we were going to a Bible study together, and he found out I was a police officer and quickly became my friend, telling me that he is a retired chaplain from the city of Redmond, where he spent 35 years. I immediately started to try to pull him out of retirement. Our department needs a chaplain. We've been without for years. We use the Snoqualmie Fire Department Chaplain or the East Side Fire and Rescue Chaplains when the need arises. But I wanted one in-house, not only to go out on calls and to represent the department in both cities, but for the welfare and the, the mental wellness of the officers that work at our department. So Pat has already started doing ride-alongs with the officers to get to know them. I've had the opportunity to call him out at night one time so far. And to be a chaplain, I got to tell you, it's a very difficult job. Police officers respond to hard calls, and then we call the chaplain to come in to talk to the family and to guide them through their time of loss. It is their worst day on earth. Pat comes in, and no matter what culture they are, what religion they are, he communicates with them and calms the situation and brings hope to them. So having Pat on our roster as a chaplain, I am thrilled. It was one of the things that I really wanted for our department, and I could not have wished for a better fit than, than Pat, so. Do you have anything to say?
Glad to be here. I'm a newlywed.
Yes, he is.
I am. Got seven months married, new to Snoqualmie. And it's a great new season for me.
Wyatt, do you have any words of wisdom?
Are you married? No. Okay. I will flow.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. Do you want photos?
Run away.
You gotta get pictures.
Okay. You won't do that. Okay. Too late. Okay. Yeah. Seasoned veteran for sure. Item, maybe move on to item number seven, AB 25-00225, 2025, Council Standing Committee Appointments. Mayor Pro Tem Jocelyn, I'll turn it over to you at this time. Make that motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'll just present this real quick. In 2004, the Council passed Resolution 1033, re-establishing Council Standing Committees, and in 2010 passed Resolution 1437, further defining the appointment process and duties. As part of the process, the Mayor Pro Tem shall recommend the Council shall, shall recommend, and the Council shall confirm by motion the membership of each committee and the committee chair by the city council's first regular meeting in January of each year. So here we are. I am proposing the following 2025 Council Committee Appointments for Council's consideration. Community and Economic Development chaired by Councilmember Elwood with Councilmember Cullen and Tremolata. Finance and Administration chaired by Councilmember Gotthel with Councilmember Elwood and Torgerson. Public and Health, Public Health and Safety chaired by Councilmember Rustic with Councilmember Gotthel and Torgerson. And Transportation and Public Works chaired by Councilmember Cullen, along with Councilmember Rustic and Tremolata. So I move to approve AB 25002, confirming the 2025 appointments to the Council's Standing Committees.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Jocelyn, Second Minister Gotthel. Anybody in Council wish to comment? No? Will I come? Go right ahead.
Well, thank you, Mark, for doing this. I know when I've done it, it's not a simple job of trying to get everybody what they want, but I think you did a good job. So hopefully you didn't get too much pushback, and thank you for stepping up.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody else wish to comment this time? Okay. Thank you all again for stepping up, and I'm delighted to work with you again this year, so I'm excited. Now that there are no additional comments, the motion before you is to approve AB 25-002, confirming the 2025 appointments for the Council's Standing Committees. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, one and all. We will now recess the meeting for an executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. Executive session is expected to last 20 minutes, and videotaping of the meeting will pause at this time. It will resume when we return to chambers.
Mayor.
Yeah. Sure.
Thank you for mentioning a fantastic new member of our team here.
Absolutely.
Caitlin, how we're, their new associate plan, but want to have her meet the Council and members of the board.
Well, Caitlin, wonderful to have you on board. If you'd like to say anything, you're certainly welcome to, but we might have some comments from our Council to ask you if you don't mind for a moment. Okay. You can come up to the podium. Sorry. My bad.
Well, hello, everybody. I'm truly excited to be here and honored to have the opportunity to work for the city of North Bend. Some of you might recognize me. No, you're not mistaken. I was a consultant for the city a couple of years ago, working on the 2023 Housing Action Plan. And it feels very full circle to come back and be able to give the city my full attention and effort, carrying on some great projects, initiatives, and I'm just very excited to dig into it.
We're thrilled to have you here. Anybody from Council wish to have a comment or question? Say hello. Hi, Alan.
Welcome aboard. I got to meet you for a minute. We're up there going, who this is, so we look forward to having you on board. And you ever have any questions, concerns, or we can help you, I'm sure the Council will be glad to give you the time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Brendan?
Yes, welcome aboard. I look forward to seeing what you bring to the table, knowing that we've been through the weeds with data before. I think you'll bring a level of expertise to the table, which is great, so I'm looking forward to everything that we have with you and the team. Welcome.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah, I thought I recognized you from the Housing Action Plan, so great to have you aboard. It was a thorough job on that, so, and that's exactly what we're going to need with the questions that we have going forward. So glad to have you on board full time.
Great. Anybody else I missed? Okay, well, thank you very much. Exciting year ahead. Okay, we are, I'm going to backtrack a little bit, so bear with me. We will now recess the meeting for an executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. The executive session is expected to last 20 minutes, and videotaping of the meeting will pause at this time. It'll resume as soon as we return to chambers. Thank you so much. We are now back. Jumped on that one. Jumped on that one. We are now back from executive session, moving on to the main agenda. Item number nine, AB twenty five dash zero zero three. Motion authorizing police services ILA renewal term with Snoqualmie. Mr. Larson, would you be kind enough to provide that staff report, please?
I certainly will, Mayor and Council. Did you want to wait for the council member uh Torgeson? Okay.
Thank you for that.
Okay, uh, Mayor, council members of the community, uh, this agenda bill provides a detailed summary of the agreement and several amendments to it since North Bend first began receiving police services from Snoqualmie in twenty twelve. More recently, in late October twenty twenty four and continuing into early January twenty twenty five. North Bend is focused on a twenty twenty five renewal term in an amount of two million eight hundred thirty five thousand six hundred seventy four dollars, which is a twelve point nine percent increase over twenty twenty four. This rema- this amount will remain in effect until the earlier of January one, twenty twenty five, or the two cities approve a new successor agreement. Uh, Mayor Miller and I continue to meet with our Snoqualmie counterparts, Mayor Ross and City Administrator Mike Shambless, along with Police Chief Lynch in an effort to forge a new police services agreement, which will continue next Monday. I've, in the meantime, though, I want to recognize the staff's effort during this process that will continue during our ongoing negotiations. In particular, I commend and thank Martin Chow, our Finance Director, along with City Attorney Kendra Rosenberg. Their efforts have been invaluable and their contributions to support obviously have been worthwhile for us to have, and I really do appreciate that. I do want to make a note in the agenda bill, uh, there is on the second page. I apologize for not seeing this earlier, but it's the fourth paragraph down and it starts with this on December nineteen, twenty twenty four. Uh, the second sentence that starts out about the middle of the paragraph, it says on December twentieth, twenty twenty four. It talks about Michael Shambless informing Mayor La- uh, Mayor Miller and and me that the city of Snoqualmie City Council intended to adopt the twenty twenty five compensation as part of a twenty twenty five renewal. Or until a new agreement is reached, agreed to by the parties, whichever is earlier, the later is is the incorrect piece there, and I do apologize for that. Otherwise, uh, the the agenda bill is in order and I believe if you have any questions, I can address those as well as uh Martin Schalkit as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Are there clarifying questions from council at this time? Seeing none? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform. And we'll take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name and your address and you have three minutes for the record to speak. So anybody online?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much, Bree. Uh, let's see, Councilmember Gattel.
Thank you.
Like to make this motion?
Yes, like to make a motion pursuant to section three, parentheses B of the twenty nineteen renewal ILA for police services between the city of Snoqualmie and North Bend. I move to approve a renewal term beginning January first, twenty twenty five and to continue until earlier of June first, twenty twenty five, or the city's approval of a new interlocal agreement for police services. During the renewal term, the parties shall continue their good faith discussions towards a new interlocal agreement. And North Bend shall pay Snoqualmie an annualized fee for police services of two million eight hundred thirty five thousand six hundred and seventy four effective January first, twenty twenty five. If the parties are a- are able to reach a new agreement for police services, the agreed compensation for twenty twenty five shall be retroactive to January first, twenty twenty five. All of the provisions of the twenty nineteen renewal ILA shall remain in effect during the renewal term, including the requirement of an eighteen month written notice of termination.
Thank you. Wait a second.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motion by Mr. Gattel, second by um, Mr. Torgeson. Mr. Gattel, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I'd also like to say thank staff and the mayor and our intermediary Bob Larson for stepping up and trying to get this done. Um, this Snoqualmie Police has been uh, you know, something this community has enjoyed and you take a look at the, you know, the surveys, it's, they've scored high and I'd love to see us come to an agreement that works for all of us. Um, and move forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Torgeson, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Oh yeah, I think this is a good um compromise. Uh, it's a good start. I hope that we can come up with a fair negotiated um, contract. Um, that's what we want out of this and I'm hoped, I really hope that we can do that.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Any additional comment from council? No? No, seeing none. Okay, the motion before us pursuant to section three B of the two thousand nineteen renewal ILA for police services between the cities of North Snoqualmie and North Bend, I move to approve a renewal term beginning January one, two thousand twenty five continuing until the earlier of June one, twenty twenty five, or the city's approval of a new interlocal agreement for police services. During this renewal term, the parties shall continue their good faith discussions toward a new interlocal agreement. And North Bend shall pay Snoqualmie an annualized fee for police services of two million eight hundred thirty five thousand six hundred and seventy four dollars effective January one, twenty twenty five. The parties are able to reach a new agreement for police services. The agreed compensation for twenty twenty five shall be retroactive to January one, twenty twenty five. All other provisions of the twenty nineteen renewal ILA shall remain in effect during this renewal term, including the requirement of the eighteen months written notice of termination. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much for everybody's effort tonight. Okay, we're gonna move on to Mayor, Council, Administrative Concerns and Initiatives. Let's start with Mr. Brendan Elwood.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just be quick here. Uh, thank you and thank you, Mr. Jocelyn, for pointing out that we missed an opportunity to thank the mentorship program and and the value that they serve in our community. Uh, so I'd like to thank them at this time. Also like to thank the volunteers in the Park Commission again. And anybody else who actually steps up and helps in our community. And I definitely want to thank staff for um negotiating and working through this uh, arduous journey of the police contract. It's sticky. There's a lot of moving parts. So thank you, Martin, and thank you, Kendra, for for navigating this. Um, and other than that, I hope everybody had a wonderful uh, uh, New Years. I was gonna say Fourth of July. It's not yet, but I know it'll be up on us quick. Uh, but hopefully everybody had a great holiday and I'm glad to be back. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Mr. Torgeson?
Uh, yeah, I concur. We didn't get a chance to talk to the mentoring program folks and I appreciate we appreciate everything that they're doing. Um, and I want to give them kudos.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Miss Heather Cohen. All right, Earl.
Uh, yeah, Happy New Year. I wanted to say that I'm encouraged to see Planning Commission uh set up a plan to uh, do their part in interacting in more of our meetings. I hope council, maybe at our retreat, can talk about uh strategies uh from our end uh, to invite that and participate more as well. I think that's great. Uh, additionally, a, just a quick reminder for our small businesses in town. I'm sure everyone was out and about and frequenting during the holiday. But it's a new year and and they got new bills to pay, so let's not forget about them uh here in January and do what we can um, to continue to frequent them so they can start off the year strong as well.
Thank you, Earl. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
I just look forward to working with staff, council, and you, Mayor, and the citizens here in the year ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gattel.
Well, Happy New Year to everybody. Um, thank you to staff again, as we said, for the working on the police contract. Thank you, Mark, for stepping up as Mayor Pro Tem and putting together the committees for us. As I said, it's not an easy job. Um, as we move into uh a new year and we're in the middle of winter, it's getting, you know, dark early, dark in the morning. Please watch out there when you're out on the streets. Um, I continue to see, including myself, sometimes looking at the speedometer going a little faster than we should in our local neighbors. Um, it's real quick for somebody to jump out behind or a dog to come out, so please be careful, watch your speed and be safe out there so you can get home to your family. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the support from council these past four mo- weeks gone pretty quickly. Uh, obviously, working with staff has been a delight. Excuse me? Did I say four months? Four weeks? Does seem, but uh, I'm learning quite a bit and I'm gonna be getting out in the field here shortly too to look at some of the development projects, both Public Works as well as the commercial side of things and continue to support the community. And as always, council members, if you like to, you wanna sit down and chat with on anything, uh, my door is open and you've just gotta give me a phone call and see if I'm here. I'm usually here Monday through Thursday now, uh, through the duration, but I would enjoy having a coffee with you. If you wanna stop by, I'd appreciate that too, so thank you.
Awesome. Um, I guess it's my turn. Thank you one and all for being here tonight and it was a bit of a long night for all of us, but uh, most appreciated. First of all, I want to say Happy New Year. Of course, everybody else at the table says the same thing, but I wanna, I'm so excited to re- work with the council today and every day um over this next year. Staff, you're excellent. Um, a lot of work ahead. We've already tackled quite a few bits and pieces. And Bob, it's a pleasure to work alongside you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, Mark, I'm excited to work with you as well. And of great appreciation for our former Mayor Pro Tem, Alan. So with that, I would like to enjoy the moment to ask for a German. Everybody joining?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great night.